All right, go ahead, Jody.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Lammert County, welcome to our Fort Collins mayoral and city council candidate forum for 2021. My name is Jody DeShane, and I'll be your moderator. Pat Berger will be our timekeeper. Thank you to the city for live streaming us on the FCTV website at FCGov.com/FCTV, on channels 14 and 881, and for recording this event for later viewing at both the city TV website and at the League's website, LWV-LammertCounty.org. The League is a nonpartisan organization which does not support or oppose any candidates or political parties, and despite our name, we are not for women only. A large part of our mission is to register, educate, and inform voters. So thank you to all who are attending tonight or watching later. Our election on April 6th includes races for mayor and city council districts 1, 3, 4, and 5, and we're thrilled to have all 14 candidates with us tonight. In Fort Collins, every registered voter can cast a vote for mayor, but in our six city districts, only registered residents within each district can vote for their district representative. This election, District 4 is also included due to the vacancy created by former councilperson Kristin Stevens, who was elected in November to be a Lammert County Commissioner. City Council people serve four-year terms. Ballots for this election will be sent out March 22nd and must be received via mail or Dropbox by the city election office by 7:00 PM on April 6th, Election Day. With 14 participants, we're breaking our time into two one-hour sessions. The first includes mayor in districts 1 and 3, the second includes districts 4 and 5. There will be a five-minute break in between. Candidates for the first session are as follows in last-name alphabetical order. For mayor, we have Jenny James-Arnt, Jerry Horak, and Molly Scold. For District 1, Nick Armstrong and Susan Katschowski. For District 3, Tricia Canonico and Gavin Koszynski. All candidates will have 90 seconds to introduce themselves, followed by questions submitted by the community, and each candidate will be given one minute to answer, rotating who will give the first response. Finally, all candidates will have one minute to give a closing comment. Candidates, please pay attention to your screens for the timekeeper, Pat, who will prompt you when you have 15 seconds left. At that point, please complete your answer. When time is up, we'll thank you and promptly move on to the next candidate. We'll be going in reverse alphabetical order. So let's get started with introductions, starting with District 1, Susan Katschowski. Susan, you need to unmute yourself.
Is so typical of me. Good evening, and thank you to the community members who will be listening in to our forum this evening. On March 9th, 2020, city council began to wage war against the COVID-19 pandemic. As your District 1 incumbent, I've been actively involved in our city's efforts to recover from the social and economic catastrophe. I'll bring this lived experience and governing skill to my second term as your District 1 representative. Your vote will enable me to continue to be your voice on city council as we work together to emerge from this pandemic even stronger than before. I'm asking you, once again, to place your confidence in me to continue this very important work. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Nick Armstrong.
Hi, my name is Nick Armstrong, and I'm running for Fort Collins City Council in District 1. More than half of District 1 is not connected to the rest of Fort Collins by way of sidewalks, bike lanes, or trails, and that has horrendous effects on our equity, the quality of life, our environment, and our economy. I feel that we can do better, because the status quo, as it currently exists, is too expensive for our most vulnerable neighbors. Through smart policy changes, we can make improvements to our quality of life in Fort Collins, improve connectivity, help support our local small businesses, and help bolster our quality of life throughout District 1 and beyond. We can make smart choices to help support not only our local economy, but our regional economy, and take our true placeholder as a leader in this gig-speed economy that we can have ownership over. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. For District 3, Gavin Koszynski.
Thank you, Fort Collins, and thank you to the League of Women Voters. My name is Gavin Koszynski, and I'm just going to get right to it. Because a lot of people are asking me, what's the difference between you and your opponent? Well, there are a lot, but there's one big one I'd like to talk about. I'm the chief financial officer of one of the largest medical practices in northern Colorado. We take care of almost 100,000 lives in our community. And this last year has shown just how challenging that can be. We've worked with the county, with the state, with hospital systems and other provider groups, with payers, with a whole lot of people to take care of our patients. That's collaboration, and that's what I do. It's not about me, I don't always get in my way, but it's not about my agenda. It's about what's right for the common good, and how can we cooperate towards that good. My opponent has a different approach. She's the president of an organization that believes we should remove security resource officers from our schools. Founder of that organization actually said, "Police violence is gun violence." And we are working with leaders who are experts against policing. That's a direct quote. So that's the difference. My opponent has her own agenda, and it's one that I don't think represents Fort Collins. I'm here to represent your agenda, so that we can all work together to solve the problems that face us. That's why I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Gavin. Also, District 3, Tricia Canonico.
Hi, I'm Tricia Canonico, and I am running for Fort Collins, District 3. And I want to thank you for this opportunity to be here. I have now lived in Fort Collins for just over 10 years, and having grown up in the military in 22 times, I am so proud and excited that I get to call Fort Collins home. In my career, I've predominantly been a small business owner and entrepreneur, so I recognize the issues that small business owners are facing today. I'm also an avid volunteer. I serve on the board at the Family Center, and I have served in leadership positions for organizations at the local and state level. And lastly, I'm a problem solver. So when I see an issue, I like to just jump in and find a solution. So this spring, when COVID broke out, I started Feed the No-COAT Frontline, and I raised $40,000 to help struggling restaurants feed our frontline workers. On city council, I'll continue to be a problem solver for my district, and I'll bring innovative solutions to the challenges Fort Collins is going to face in the future. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you, Tricia. Now for the mayoral candidates, Molly Scold.
Hi, everybody. My name is Molly Scold, and I'm so happy to be here today. Thank you to the organizers for this. I so appreciate your hard work. I am a third-generation native of Fort Collins. I'm a wife, a mom, and an active community participant. My husband, his family homesteaded in this area, so we have deep roots here, and we're very proud to be living here and be a part of this community in this region. I'm a businessperson. I work on revitalization. I work with city and public-private partnerships and small businesses. Lately, this pandemic, I think, reminds all of us how important it is to care for one another, and how important it is to work together, and how important it is to come to the table, and how important it is to rebuild our economy and help our small businesses. I'm so proud to be endorsed by our current mayor, Wade Troxell. And as we bid him goodbye and give him a pat, a great leadership, and as he's termed out, I'm so proud of the leaders that we've had here in Fort Collins. But our work is not done. We've got a lot of work to do, and so I want to be a city on purpose together, because we've got to co-author this community together.
Thanks, Molly. Jerry Horak.
Hi, I'm Jerry Horak. I'm a husband, a father, and a grandfather, and I've spent 40 years building businesses in science and technology. Besides raising children and now spoiling grandchildren, being on city council was some of the most meaningful and satisfying work I've ever done. I spent the last year talking within the community, with the community, and having talks with about 60 people or more for a half hour to two hours to find out what their priorities are for our community. And what they told me is, this community is hurting, that we have things we need to do. I have, you know, things like tips are down, people aren't tipping as much. So the lady who cuts my hair is concerned about whether she'll be able to take care of her sons or teenage sons. A friend of mine that serves on a nonprofit board is very concerned, because the demand for those services and goods are up, donations are down. That the, my favorite restaurant in town, the owner is really perplexed, because he's had to lay off everyone but family. So where, you know, what you see is there, people are hurting, families are hurting, businesses are hurting, the environment's hurting. And what we need to do is to really look at, how can we deal with those priorities and do something? I pledge to work with the council, the staff, the community, to deal with every one of those services, and to make sure that we revitalize the economy, as well as make sure that working families are helped.
Thank you, Jerry. And now Jenny James-Arnt.
Hey, thank you, League of Women Voters, for having me. And having this forum is really important. And COVID is campaigning's a challenge, so anything we can do to make sure the voters have an informed choice is a really great thing, so appreciate that. So I'm Jenny James-Arnt. I'm currently your state representative from House District 52 and have been for the last seven years. Those seven years have, I've been working hard to represent Fort Collins. So I am a Fort Collins native, minus three weeks. I always say that, because someone will fact-check that. And I went to Mooreblevins Pooter, Colorado College Peace Corps. I went on to get a few more degrees and those sorts of things. But I dedicated my life to special needs students as a teacher and then faculty member in the area of disabilities. When I joined the legislature, I followed upon the work of my predecessor, Randy Fisher, in digging into water and agriculture issues. And there I have found a very meaty issue, and have been able to pass a lot of good bills down there in gray water, wastewater, keeping more water in the Pooter River, and actually, you know, just getting those things done for our community. I've been married 31 years to my husband, and I have three adult children, ages 29, no, 27, 25, and 22. And I look forward to the questions tonight.
Thanks, Jenny. Okay, let's just get right into questions. Question number one is, growth and the pressure it puts on infrastructure and services continues to be a key challenge for council. How can the city create a balance between inevitable growth and maintaining quality of life for our residents? And we'll start with Nick on this one.
Thank you. And thanks to our neighbors who are tuning in tonight, who have much more fun things to do, I'm sure. But really, we have, in District 1 and in corner areas of our city, book, park, service, and amenities deserts, and food deserts in particular, especially for our neighbors that only have one car, working families that have to choose between getting to work on time or getting their kids to school. Policy, bad policy, has been indoctrinated into our city council, and it leads to things such as not connecting our trail networks through, not investing in our neighborhoods. And so when we require developers to pay for and plan for literally every aspect of community development, we end up with isolated island neighborhoods that are disconnected from the rest of Fort Collins and disenfranchised. And recent studies from Hungary indicate that the more disconnected physically your neighborhoods are, the more disconnected socially and more inequitable that those neighborhoods become. So we need to leverage all of our existing tools, like metro districts and other funding mechanisms, to truly increase our infrastructure and reduce our taxation of our infrastructure.
Thanks, Nick. Gavin.
Yeah, this is a great question, and this goes to what I was talking about in my opening remarks, which is working together. The whole growth and anti-growth debate is over. Growth is coming. The question is, how are we going to manage that growth? And it's not enough to simply put a moratorium on metro districts, which are the single best investment-funding mechanism that we have for development. We have to figure out how to do this smartly, and that's what, that's what I'm all about. It's working together to manage this growth, so that we can maintain those wonderful community amenities that we all love, like open spaces and parks and trails. No one wants to lose that, certainly not me. But the people are coming, and if we don't manage this growth well, then it will put stress on our infrastructure, it will create more commuting, which is not good for the climate, and that puts additional stress on our infrastructure. So it's a difficult question, it's just an issue of managing this intelligently.
Thank you. Tricia. You're on mute. Thank you. Growth is going to happen, but we have to be really smart and strategic and thoughtful, and keep climate action at the center of what we do. We need to build so that neighborhoods have access to bike trails, to parks, to natural areas, and we have to be really thoughtful in how we do this. We should be infilling and building higher and denser, so that people have access to the things that are important to them. I've lived in dying mill towns, and we don't want to be that. We want to continue to grow so we can thrive, but we need to make sure that everything we do is balanced and keeps what's important and what makes Fort Collins one of the most livable cities in the country moving forward in a good direction. Thank you. Molly.
So when we grow, and we will, and we know that we grow, I look at the growth in terms of, and the strategy of the growth in terms of disciplined growth. We've got to be, yes, thoughtful, yes, strategic, yes, pragmatic, but also disciplined, so that we understand there are things we can do, and there are the things that we need to hold off on, because we can't pay for everything all of the time. I think of also metro districts as well. Our metro's district right now, the Montava District, is working with a group called DPZ. I've worked with the DPZ partners, and they focus squarely on future growth and communities. And the whole concept is the fact that you work towards a community that you can walk to school, you can walk or ride your bike to work, you can walk in close proximity and shop and play and live, and thus making our environment and our city healthier and happier and safer. So I think about these new urbanism developments and how practical they are.
Thanks, Molly. Yeah. Jerry.
Yes, we need to build community. We need to make both housing and living more affordable. We need to make sure there's a good transit system that people can get to, including in northeast, I agree with you. We need to be looking at really how we can make sure we provide basic services, streets, public safety, but also recreation to citizens all over this community in a way that makes sense. We have good policies in place to do that. But I think the council needs to refocus on basic services and take a look at what needs to be done in a way that makes sense to all citizens and is fair. That's the whole equity inclusion, we need to be taking a look at those. And I really just think we need to make sure we're providing the level of services that makes sense and is sustainable.
Thank you. Jenny.
Oh, thank you. I'm glad we all pretty much agree on this, it's great. I'd like to throw into this mix of the smart development, smart growth, some of the environmental things that I know we can do better than some. I stay down in Denver quite a bit. You know, Denver's paved its roads with this impermeable concrete, and there's new materials out there that allows the water to soak in, that's just much more environmentally friendly with less runoff. We can do that. We have top urban planners in our city. There's so much excitement out there around planning the new cities and the new communities. So I'm glad we're all agreeing on the communities, the walkability, the, and just get very excited when I think about really looking into our zoning codes and seeing if we haven't somehow incentivized high housing prices. So let's get together and do all that and reflect the will of the community.
Thank you. Susan.
I believe that as we, as we grow, we need to be, to pay close attention to the increase in the number of cars that are going to come along with that. And so we do need communities that are built, I call it, building higher and tighter, built close to transit, built in a way that there's a sense of community and also connectivity with other communities, so that other neighborhoods, so that we get people out of their cars and onto multimodal transportation. We're going to protect our air quality that way, the less cars that we have, even though we have more people. I look at the, at the trails and as mini highways, that's what I call them. So instead of being on the roads, we're actually on mini highways and getting where we need to go, but that sense of community, paying attention to our climate action plan, and watching our air quality as we grow.
So question two, what is your assessment of the city's climate action plan and our progress so far in pursuing the accelerated climate action goals? And on this one, we'll start with Gavin.
Yeah, this is a great question, and this is another one. When I talk about, we've got a great community, how are we going to make it better? There's no more, no more low-hanging fruit. The issues that we're going to work on are going to be the tough ones, and that's why we have to work together on these things. And so climate is certainly one of them. I think we all agree that we want to move to a renewable, sustainable, clean energy source. I don't know anyone who doesn't believe that that's the direction we should go. I certainly don't. The question is, what are we, are we, who are we going to hurt along the way? So there are some milestones at 2020 that we missed, some more coming up at 2030 that are in jeopardy. We need to ask ourselves, are we going to blindly pursue these arbitrary dates at the expense of the vulnerable people in our community? People who are already living on the edge, people who can't afford higher utility rates? Or are we going to be a highly reliable community and be adaptive to these goals and be data-driven? I think that's the way to do it and to address this. We all believe in the same objective, though.
Thank you. Tricia. You're muted. I'm really excited to live in a community that is so forward-thinking in our climate action goals. And I think one area that we can really move forward in achieving these goals is moving to cleaner energy. And I think we should look to incentivize people to move to solar. I really love our Epic Home Loan Program. Solar system, they make it so easy, and they've now expanded the system, so you can get loans up to $50,000. You know, I would like to see these programs continue and expanded, so that we can move more towards a cleaner electric system here in our city. Thank you. Molly.
Yeah, I, I'm also proud to live in a community that is so aggressive and so thoughtful about our climate action and the goals. I'd like to shift the thinking, though, as a leadership style, rather than, you know, checking things off the list and tapping. I, I like the analogy more of what will make it better. So that's how I think about climate action. We can, we can check things off, or we can be continually thinking about what's going to make it better and better and better. Working with our private partners is so important, the PRPA, the other private partners is important. Understanding innovative and those who are directing things to help solve problems is crucial.
Thank you. Jerry.
Yes, in 2015, I made sure the climate action plan was more than an action plan. It was a climate implementation plan, taking a look at what specific measures could be done, what the cost is, and what sort of benefits and reducing greenhouse gases would be there. That was implemented by the council, that's why I supported those things. I was on the PRPA board, the Flat River Power Authorities Board, and pushed and made sure that we moved forward on these goals. Currently, Flat River, this year, will have 50% non-carbon energy, and in a few short years, we'll be close to 100% of that energy. I think that's a significant step. Number two we need to work on is vehicles. Vehicles are the second-largest polluter in Fort Collins. Greenhouse gases. We need to really work people not to be using cars, having people use electric vehicles more, that's how we move forward. But we have to be aggressive on these things. And the other one is, solar energy, wind energy actually costs less than coal energy.
Thank you. Jenny.
Oh, thank you very much. I'm glad we all agree that the climate action plan's been good for Fort Collins. I think it's been good for business. I think it attracts people who want to live to Fort Collins with good businesses, good jobs, so that they can have a place for their families. So I don't think that's, I think that either or debate, that ship has sailed. I think we do need to be mindful, at the state, we set up the Office of Just Transition, so when we retire a coal plant, we're going to be intentional about retraining workers, right? We're going to do this in a, in a kind way to transition. Clean energy is also an equity issue for people, at least among us, because pollution hits them harder than it hits some other people, right? So I think it's an equity issue to transition as fast as we can for ourselves, and our, but more importantly, our kids and grandkids. It's also going to take a regional approach, because pollution doesn't know boundaries. So we're going to partner with our region and our state to make some of these things happen.
Thank you. Susan.
I believe we definitely need to be aggressive about our, our clean energy, our efforts toward clean energy. Using solar, it has become more and more a popular item. Want to set a high bar, though, on our expectations regarding the use of cars. I do agree that we can get away from use of cars. We're going to improve the quality of our air, and I'm especially concerned about that, because as my granddaughter said very wisely, she says, Grandma, if we can't breathe, then what else really matters, right? So I realize that some of these, the technology is still coming to perfect electric cars, for example, but we have to be very, very diligent about setting a high bar for energy efficiency and, and ways to keep our community clean.
Thank you. Nick.
It comes from a place of privilege to suggest that our neighbors who have one car and working families can afford to switch their modes of transit, especially if there aren't ready alternatives. It creates 112 tons of CO2 just to get families back and forth twice daily to Tavelli Elementary School. And we can connect that, that school directly to a trail system with minimal effort. That's low-hanging fruit, if I ever heard it. More than that, we need to work to create sustainable energy systems that have storage capacity, so that our wind power, our solar power that's generated by our community is able to be stored efficiently. And partnerships with CSU, Front Range Community College, and our local energy partners could help us do that. As Jenny said, we need to be responsible about transitioning workers from one industry to another and helping provide training and incentivization to help bolster our efficiency in this area as well. Also, partnering with HOAs and metro districts and business improvement districts to bolster the tree canopy, help instill zero-skipping and those principles from day one with any new development.
Thank you. Question three, what efforts can and should be made to increase public participation in government and elections, like ranked choice voting, independent redistricting, public financing, and moving elections to November? I'm going to start with Tricia, and then I'm going to go backwards, so you guys don't keep following the same people. So Tricia, I absolutely agree with all of those. I absolutely agree with all of those things. Um, I think, for instance, we can see how ranked choice voting in District Four could really change the results of, uh, this election. Um, can you repeat the other parts of that question as well?
Yes, um, ranked choice voting, independent redistricting, public financing, and moving elections to November as examples.
Yeah, I think we can see how outside money can really shape elections. And I would like to move to, uh, public financing so we don't have that as a distraction. We've seen Boulder do that successfully and I think we could do that here in Fort Collins as well. And we only get 30% of eligible voters voting in this election. And I think if we moved our elections to November, we would see a greater increase and more people's voices would be heard if we did that. Thank you.
Thank you. Gavin?
Yeah, I'm not so sure about ranked choice voting. I don't know that much about it, but it seems kind of gimmicky to me. I believe in our democracy and I think what our founding fathers came up with is sufficient. I don't know of anyone who's come up with something better than the US Constitution and Declaration of Independence. So until I see something better, I'm going to stick with, uh, what we've had for 200 years. Uh, in terms of moving to November, I would really like to learn more about that. It seems like a pretty bad idea. I think it's, we've seen last November's election was toxic, was polarizing, was very divisive. What I like about April is that we get to avoid all of that. And that's what makes our community great. We can work together because we're not at each other's throats the way they are in Washington DC. So I, I, I'm interested in increasing public participation because I do think that's a goal. But I also think that's a goal that's taking care of itself. I'm talking to a lot of people who are suddenly very energized in this, uh, April election because they're not happy with what's happening in this city. And so I'm, I'm willing to learn more.
Thank you. Nick?
Uh, I'm a big proponent of ranked choice voting. And actually I think that we need to create an ongoing, uh, civics education course for our city to help get our community members from every district engaged more in the process of city leadership. Working on, uh, my position from the, the Board of Box Elder Sanitation, um, I can tell you that we had to invest pretty heavily in marketing and outreach to the neighbors to inform them of how, uh, when they flush certain things, where it goes. And so just knowing that that education is an opportunity and seeing, uh, events such as, um, you know, the, the Touch a Truck program that happened at the Pooter Libraries, um, and being able to engage in that way really helps elevate leaders from our community that can use that representation. And when we focus on each district in particular with that type of education, we can help solve problems and find out about problems in a, in a bidirectional way. And it really helps to bolster outcomes for our entire community.
Thank you. Susan?
Sure. I think one of the, one of the things that, um, that we should be cognizant of is, is that an interest in, in, uh, government participation starts with the kids. And I think that, um, that we need to bolster our civic education, um, in, um, with the kids to let them know at an early age why it's important for them to be involved, that their vote actually makes a difference and they need to have a voice. Another thing that I, that I would propose too is, um, letting them, um, encouraging them through their social studies classes or civics classes, uh, to participate as judges, um, in the election process. And I know that there are schools that, um, that do that and, and have their kids, uh, be judges and see how voting actually takes place and, um, and again, why it's extremely important for them to, um, to be a part of it. So I think education is one of the, one of the key factors in, um, in increasing voter participation.
Thank you. Jenny?
Oh, thank you. I am a huge proponent of ranked choice voting. Uh, that's my bill at the Capitol passed out of, uh, State Affairs last week and will be in finance tomorrow. And that is a permissive bill to allow cities to opt in, but then we're providing a structure around that to help facilitate the voting. So ranked choice voting, yes. Redistricting, we put that to the voters two years ago in Y and Z, passed by a mile. It was 100 to zero capital. And that is the nonpartisan, the commissions that you see going to work now to do the redistricting on the, after the census is returned. November elections, I'm happy to think about that. If we get higher, I'm for anything where most people's voice is heard, are heard, okay? So anything we can do to engage people to, to get them to vote is something that I do. And every year at the Capitol, I run the ever not popular overturned Citizens United, um, resolution where I get two votes or sometimes just one, uh, because the Democrats don't like it and Republicans don't like it. Um, everyone wants in on the money game. So I'll just keep running that every year and getting to talk about that as well.
Thank you. Jerry?
Yeah, I think we need to get citizens as involved as we can for their ideas for being involved in the decision-making process. I, I've before held listening sessions twice a month. I pledge as mayor to make sure I hold even more listening sessions, trying to get at different interest groups or interests, whether it's dealing with the equity question, business questions, environmental questions, to really hear the ideas that citizens have and the concerns they do at a granular level that we can really make a change. The other thing that I think we, we really need to do is anytime there's a significant issue, I pledge to the citizens of Fort Collins that I will make sure that we have an extensive public outreach. And when you're dealing with major issues, that outreach may need to be a year. It may need to have stakeholders involved. It may need to have meetings involved. Make sure that when the council makes a decision, we've been well informed to what the public thinks, what the options are, and where we should go with a decision.
Thank you. Molly?
Well, I think the elephant in the room here is that good people and smart people are shying away from not only public service, but general involvement. So I would step back and I would ask the question, why is that? I'm not sure changing the date, changing the format is going to change that or solve that problem. So I go back to, uh, the collective intelligence of people and listening to the voters and looking at the data and diving into this because I don't, I don't think there is one easy answer. I think it's going back to the voters for them to decide and listening to them and coming to an agreement or to an understanding of why good people and smart people are, are not being involved. I think that's the core issue.
Thank you. Next question. In 2017, the city became a member of the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, whose purpose is to work to achieve racial equity and advance opportunities for all. What is your assessment of this alliance and how do you believe it should impact the work of the council? Taking into account how the target communities perceive the problems and solutions? Uh, let's start this one with Jenny.
Sure. I mean, this is a sort of, absolutely. I mean, this is part of being an inclusive community and I'm sort of using a little tagline like Fort Collins for everyone. And I mean that in the most sincere way. This is something I have to say, I think Fort Collins has historically not been very good at. Um, if you look at some of the graduation rates, we're falling down there, right? With, uh, uh, non, non-white peop- students, right? So we, we, this is a, this is a stubborn issue that we need to really tuck into and I'm glad the city is starting in on that. And I would take this extremely, extremely seriously because it's just like the, my sort of fervor of voting and the one person, one vote. It's, it, it goes back to every single person is a member of our community and everyone needs to have their voice heard. This is not Fort Collins for some. It's going to, it's Fort Collins for every single person there.
Thank you. Jerry?
Yeah, the, this is something we need to work on. And by working on that, it's a couple of different things. One, we need to listen to the people who are in those particular areas who have ideas. We need to hear what folks have to say versus just trying to, we think we know what the answers are. We need to really call on whoever is hired in that equity and inclusion office, will be directly reported to the city manager to make sure that we're taking a look at different ideas they have. And one of the key ones to really change how the city deals with customers, all their customers, is to make sure that we're, when we're hiring people, that has to be one of the criteria that we're looking at. For what those folks' experience are, we're dealing with this particular issue to make sure it is equitable way that we look at things, how we come up with policies and it's inclusive of what we, what citizens want. So I think we need to be listening more than talking. We need to really listen to what folks have to say and then work our way from there.
Thank you. Molly?
Yeah, I'm, I'm proud of our city that we're tackling this as well. This is an important topic. You know, I grew up, um, I was a Fort Collins High School Lampkin and we were all one school and we had one common goal. We had mutual working relationships and we were all, we were all together. And that, that means something to me that we were all one. There weren't separate divisions. We were all one school. When I think of diversity, I think of a whole, a whole lot of things. There's also diversity of thought, respecting people of different opinions and, and different, uh, economics and different, where they live and what they think and what they do. And it, the bigger issue is a mutual respect for one another. That's what it comes down to. So that we create a safe and welcoming community that everybody wants to live in. They may not believe like you do or like I do, or they may have differing thoughts, but they feel welcome here and they feel a part of the community.
Thank you. Tricia?
You're on mute. Apparently I haven't done this Zoom thing enough yet since, during the pandemic. Um, I think an equitable and inclusive Fort Collins is one where everyone thrives. And I think creating the Equity Inclusion Office is a really great first step. But I think there's still a lot of work for us to do in our city. Um, you know, I work with the Family Center and we do a lot with the Latinx community. And just today, um, speaking with the rest of the executive committee, that we were just talking about how our voices aren't being heard, um, I mean, the Latinx community that we represent. Um, so I really want to see Fort Collins move to welcome all communities and to listen to those voices. We still have more work to do to dismantle institutional and structural racism. But I think Fort Collins is really moving in the right direction and we'll get there.
Thank you. Gavin?
Yeah, great question. And this is a very challenging issue, uh, as we've seen over the last year. I, I, I think we all agree that people should be treated equally. I believe in a colorblind society. Uh, and that's what I do in healthcare. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, at our practice, we take care of almost 100,000 lives in this community. And we are completely indifferent as to their race or their sexual orientation or their transgender status or transitioning. None of that matters to us. We take, we take care of anyone who walks in our door and I'm proud of, of our practice for that. Because that's the way Fort Collins is. As my friend Wade Troxel said, Fort Collins is that city where four people pull up to a four-way intersection and everyone is waving each other through, right? That's the way we treat one another. We're a kind community. I don't think there's racism here. And if there is, it needs to be pulled out by the roots and gotten rid of wherever we find it. But I don't, I, I haven't seen that and I don't think that exists here. So we do need to do better. We do need to work on this. This is a challenging issue that we can work on together.
Thank you. Nick?
Your neighbor on city council needs to have your back, no matter what you look like or sound like. And one of the things that I have been most proud of is building platforms for my neighbors and then stepping back and allowing them to speak. And then not just listening to what they have to say, but acting and learning based on what they have said and shared. The BIPOC community has shared their story time and time again and gotten mostly inertia as a response. And we have to do better. Um, you know, in, in Fort Collins Comic Con, we built a diverse and representative team of geeks. We brought diverse and representative artists to the table. We highlighted their work on our posters and in our badges. We, with Fort Collins Startup Week, the first year we had panels in Spanish was last year when I took over as lead organizer. This year we have many panels in Spanish and brought the Latinx community to the table in a way that hadn't been done before. Dedicated, purposeful outreach is required to truly bring representation to our city.
Thank you. Susan?
Um, equity is one of my top priorities. Um, I've always believed that everyone should and ought to have the, an opportunity to thrive and, um, equity is that umbrella that, under which everything else exists. I worked on the equity, uh, on the, um, uh, Community Impact Committee, an ad hoc committee, and, and we were charged with, um, with, with dealing with, how to assess the equity gaps. And we came up with the Equity Office, um, and, which is going to be probably online this coming summer in order to, um, assess, have a systematic assessment of the equity issues that exist. And, and systemic racism does exist in Fort Collins. So this Equity Office is going to be an amazing addition. Um, I think that, uh, it's going to be also embedded in, uh, every department of our city so that it becomes like, um, like just natural for everything to be judged accordingly.
Thank you, Susan. We're going to squish one more question in here real quick, a huge one. What factors do you think are most important in deciding the best use of the land at the former Hughes Stadium site? And we'll start this one with Jerry.
I don't know as much as factors. What I do think is going to happen, if you take a look at all the rights CSU has, what the citizens want, I think it's going to end up being a negotiation between the city of Fort Collins, I think CSU and the PATHS group. And I, in, in that, I think it's important to have a mayor who's had experience dealing with CSU and important issues, the mitigation of the stadium issues I worked with Dr. Frank on, and was able to achieve some things like the underpasses underneath Prospect and Shields. I really think we need to think about how we get those folks in the room, try to work with them so it's an outcome that works. And to me, that's probably going to look like there's going to be something that CSU has to give up. The PATHS folks are going to have to look at what's going to be done there because it's an uncertain situation. The only way you get certainty out of this situation is the city owns the open space and something gets developed. Once, until something's developed, it's an uncertain situation where the city owns the open space.
Thank you. Jenny?
Oh, thank you. First and foremost, we're going to listen to the voters. I'm very big on process and hearing the voice of the voters. If that initiative passes, then we're going to have, we will buy that decree then we would need to, uh, zone that as open space. And then we would need to make a, uh, an offer for the purchase of that land. And that's where, uh, the, the negotiations would start and fair market value, what the offer would be if CSU would accept the offer or if CSU would even keep that land up for sale. That is currently state land. And although it's within the city limits, we have this town gown relationship, right? And I'm very, very eager to, uh, CSU is our largest employer and means a lot to our community. So we're going to first and foremost, listen to the voters and then see what we need to do legally. We will do all of that. And then, uh, if there's negotiation to be done, we will do that. I don't ever think lawsuits are the best use of taxpayer dollars.
Thank you. Susan?
Well, I voted, uh, to put the initiative on the ballot. Um, and I definitely am looking forward to the, um, to the voice of the people. I currently support keeping it as open space. Uh, and it will be interesting to see how that progresses if the initiative passes. One thing I would not support is, uh, any idea of making it a metro district because I definitely don't believe that that's a, um, a tool that's useful in Fort Collins due to the detrimental effects that it has on, um, homeowners. And so, um, I guess we'll see what they, we'll see what the, uh, what the voters say and take it from there.
Thank you. Nick?
Truly creative solutions are going to be required in order to preserve our open spaces in Fort Collins. The space at Hughes is truly special in terms of an environmental resource. And we should work to find a creative solution, a land swap or some other initiative that allows Transit Center and those homes, the affordable homes to be built, uh, in maybe the, the Mulberry Corridor, where it would do a greater benefit to the community, um, or even leveraging the Kroger space and building upwards from there. As, uh, many of the candidates have mentioned tonight, um, as you pack more homes into a space and build up, you have closer access to net, uh, to nature. And so I think that it's an important aspect to understand that. you have closer access to net, to nature. And so I think that it's an important aspect to understand that if we can bring CSU back to the table and work with neighbors and also work with other areas of Fort Collins where we could create creative solutions, that will create some very nice outcomes for the rest of Fort Collins at large.
Thank you. Gavin?
This will almost surely end up in litigation, let's be honest. And that goes to, I think, what Nick said earlier. That's, this is a, a product of failed leadership. So I, I also trust the, uh, the voters and will defer to what they decide. But this, the fact that we're in this situation is, uh, is tragic to begin with. So you ask about factors. The factor that matters to me the most is what does this do to future open space projects? Because we know that purchasing the land is going to be very expensive. We also know that there's a lot of concrete under that stadium and we also know that that was a parking lot filled with oil and gas and that the city's going to require about $2 million to clean that up. So we have a dedicated sales tax revenue of 0.25% that goes to open space. What does using that money for this open space do to future open space projects? That's what concerns me the most. I don't want to jeopardize our open space or those funds.
Thank you. Tricia?
Yeah, I think with Hughes Stadium, we're looking at two really important priorities for Fort Collins. We need a greater inventory of affordable housing. What, one thing that really makes Fort Collins unique and special is our open spaces. So I absolutely agree that we are putting this before to the voters to decide what the outcome should be here. And I will support whatever their decision is and fight to make that a reality. I would like us to continue to work to develop, um, more affordable housing in other areas of the city, and also to continue to acquire more land for open space. But I think this is a unique opportunity and we have to leave this up to the voters to make the right decision. And we, as a council, will have to respect that.
Thank you. Molly?
Yeah, I, so many of the things that are said are, are true. I, 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 I think though about leadership because, you know, we all have one vote on this, right? We're all just one vote. What's important here is how does leadership guide this process? That's what's important. We need a leader that thinks independently and that can look at this issue from a, from a 30,000-foot view to say, what's the best thing for our city, right? Because we are not a one-city, our one-issue city. We have multiple things going on. And I'm all for open space, but I'm also for things that make our city great, for things that build our city up and that make us, uh, open and a welcoming city. So I also agree that, that we risk really losing out on the big picture.
Thank you. So now, quick closing, and Molly, you haven't gone first yet, so I'm going right back to you. So 60 seconds for closing statements. Molly?
Good. I, I was thinking about that this morning. I was thinking about a man, um, who was born in 1873 and he was a pretty well-known man and, uh, uh, he was always referred to as a big, tall, friendly man with grit. He was a Senator of Iowa for many years and he was my great-grandfather. And I think about him, I'm, I'm referred to, uh, many of his qualities the same, and I think about him a lot. I, I think about the important qualities leaders need to have and what's important right now, because I think the biggest issue on our ballot this April is who we are going to select as a leader. We need to have somebody who allows for viewpoints, who sees, understands the tough times and somebody who thinks independently and who acts independently and who above all else will put Fort Collins first.
Thank you, Molly. Jerry?
Yes, I pledge to work with the council, with the community to make sure that we revitalize this, uh, the economy, that we build community, that we restore the environment from the effects of the fires, that we also make sure that we do not waste taxpayers' dollars, that we spend them wisely, that we also look at and make sure that the everyone, hard-to-reach populations have the same access to the vaccine as other populations have without the internet and are not overwhelmed. I think that's a key one. And we also make sure that we have connection, connection being our, our internet utility, being transparent, that you know when it's going to come to your area, when you, you can plan and have an idea of that. And especially to change the priorities of connection, that low-income neighborhoods need to be getting it first, not last. That kids there need to be able to have access to do their homework, that the adults need to have employment opportunities and educational opportunities. I think that we owe that to this community.
Thank you, Jerry. Jenny?
Thank you, and thank you for having us again. Um, you know, the role of the mayor in Fort Collins is unique because we have the council manager model. So what does a mayor do, right? Provides vision, provides leadership, acts as the sort of front door to Fort Collins. It's the person who comes to Denver for the big lunches that I go to now and watch our current mayor go to. It's the person who sets the overall tone, creates relationships regionally, statewide with our federal partners, and works really closely with our, um, city staff and the, um, and Darren. So our, um, and also with our regional partners, right? Pot River Power Authority, Colorado State University, Front Range, Pooter School District. That's the person who sets the tone and style for our city, and I would be honored to be your next mayor.
Thank you, Jenny. Susan?
Well, once again, thank you for, um, for allowing us to, uh, present our, our thoughts at the forum. Thanks to the listeners for, um, for being here. I think that governing is an, is an acquired skill involving training and practice. And, and as your incumbent, um, I have that experience and proven track record for, for voting, um, the values of, of District One. For sure, I'm the only true progressive in this race and I'm very proud of, uh, to be endorsed by, um, Jonah Goose, Betsy Markey, Joanne Genal, Kristin Stevens, Bob Overbeck, Kathy Kip, um, and many others who believe that, um, I can, uh, work to bring us back, uh, from our, from the fires and, uh, the pandemic and make us, uh, stronger than we ever were before. And I ask for the, I ask for the voters to put their confidence in me once again to continue to do that very, very important work. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Nick?
As a small business owner and an event organizer in our community, I've helped raise over $120,000 for Pooter River Public Library District, helped provide, uh, educational and peer-to-peer resource sharing between over 1,000 local businesses over the last few years with, uh, Fort Collins Startup Week. And so, uh, what's important to me is that our neighbors feel empowered and to build the next great thing, whether that's a creative endeavor or a business, I want them to feel, um, elevated by their city council person. And from Richards Lake to Drake, right now, our neighbors feel disenfranchised and disconnected by their current city council person. They feel that they're not being listened to. They feel that there's no action occurring that meets their needs to help them grow a business, get connected, just get the kids to school, or keep food and a roof over their heads. We need to do better. The status quo is too expensive for our existing neighbors. It's too expensive for our new neighbors that will be joining us over time. And it's too expensive for our most vulnerable neighbors in our community. We have to do better.
Thank you, Nick. Gavin?
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters and to the people in Fort Collins who are watching this. Thank you. Your engagement is what matters. Local elections like this matter. So I realize that I never had a chance to introduce myself. Um, I have been married to my wife, uh, for 20 years this year. And we have two kids, a junior in high school and a seventh grader. We love this community very much. And we have since the minute we lived here and decided to raise a family here. And that's why when I walk around to neighborhoods like Huntington Hills and Southridge Greens, Fossil Lake, West Chase, neighborhoods all over District Three, I'm hearing one common refrain and it alarms me. There's a lot of people who have not paid attention to municipal elections until now. A lot of people are telling me they don't like the way that their city is going. And I share that frustration, but I'm telling you, you're not alone. There are a lot of people who feel that way. And I'm glad to be endorsed by Ken Summers, the current District Three Representative, and the three people who held the seat before him. That's why I asked for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Gavin. Tricia?
Yes, hi. Um, thank you again for this opportunity to be here tonight. And thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting it on. I have lived all across the country and internationally, and my husband and I chose Fort Collins because this is an exceptional city and I think we're all so fortunate to call this city home. Um, and I've been giving back for the 10 years I've lived here and I want to continue to do that on City Council. I want to bring, uh, uh, responsive representation to my district. I want to be a voice for my constituents and for the businesses. As a small business owner, again, I recognize what they're going through. I want all our voices to be heard in this community. And, um, I appreciate all the endorsements I've received, Congressman Jonah Goose, County Commissioners, other, uh, city council members, and, um, I want to fight for my district. Thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. Well, that is all of our time. Thank you sincerely, all of you, for spending your time with us and, uh, letting the voters meet you. Um, we will take a five-minute break and then, uh, resume with the candidates from District, Districts Four and Five. Okay, go ahead. Welcome back, everyone. We will now be hearing from our second set of candidates from Districts Four and Five. They are in alphabetical order by last name, District Four, Jessica Deardahl, Erin Hottenstein, Shirley Peel, Melanie Potyandi, and Sidna Rashid. And District Five, Jeff Hanson and Kelly Olson. A reminder, all candidates will have 90 seconds for an introduction, one minute to answer questions, and one minute for closing. Candidates, please pay attention to your screens for our timekeeper Pat, who will prompt you when you have 15 seconds left. At that point, please complete your answer. When time is up, we will thank you and promptly move on to the next candidate. So first introduction, 90 seconds each, and we'll start with Sidna. Unmute yourself.
Thanks to the League for organizing this forum. Hello, my name is Sidna Rashid and I have lived in District Four, Clarendon Hills, for the past 20 years. When I retired from my job as Chief Accountant at Maersk Oil Qatar, my husband, my son and I were anxious to get back home and to find a place to put our roots down. And we've so, I'm so happy that we found Fort Collins. It's a wonderful city to live in. I, in the past 20 years, I've been very active in many of the nonprofits in town and they include the League of Women Voters, the ACLU of Colorado, and recently, Front Range Forum, which is a lifelong learning organization sponsored by the city of Fort Collins. I'm running for City Council because I think that my background as an accountant and my passion for finding evidence-based, uh, solutions to problems will come in handy in the next few years, which I believe will be tough ones for the, for this city. My focus will be on long-term solution, improvements, not short-term gains. As a City Council member, I would have the opportunity to help those who are, uh, need support in the community and that includes small business owners who are trying to stay afloat in the wake of the pandemic, the homeless and families who are looking for affordable housing and affordable childcare. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie?
Hi, and thanks also to the League for having this event. My name is Melanie Potyandi. I am the current District Four City Council Member and a candidate to retain my, my seat. When I'm not on council, I am a school psychologist at Rocky Mountain High School, mom to a nine-year-old and an almost-five-year-old, and also, uh, an active volunteer at both the state and local level. Being both a parent and a public educator in District Four, I have a unique understanding of the strengths and struggles that are going on for residents in southwest Fort Collins. When it became clear that Kristin Stevens was going to be vacating the District Four seat in November, I had both local legislators and my neighbors reach out and say, Melanie, you should throw your hat in the ring for this. And I, I jumped on it because I really believe in the power of local government to shape the daily lives of individuals in Fort Collins. Especially in my work at Rocky with students with disabilities and their families, it's clear that although Fort Collins has many, many strengths and it's a wonderful place to live, we need to make significant changes if we want to make sure that all residents get to experience the breadth of what Fort Collins has to offer. As a city councillor, I get to help shape policy that helps to make sure that everybody has a safe and stable and affordable place to live, that we can take care of our small business landscape, that we can make great choices for transportation and environmental stewardship, and that also that we can look through an equity lens. So I encourage you to vote for me for District Four, Melanie Potyandi.
Thank you. Shirley?
Good evening. Thanks to the League of Women Voters for putting this on. Um, as I've been running for office, the three questions that I get over and over again are, who am I? What are my qualifications and why am I running? My name is Shirley Peel. I am a wife of 32 years and I've lived in Fort Collins for 20 years. I'm a mother of four. And as an educator, I've been a classroom teacher, an administrator, a school founder, and a board member. The same qualifications that made me a successful educator are what will make me a successful council member. One, as a classroom teacher, I care deeply about my, um, students and I care deeply about this community. As an educator, I know the value of communicating and articulating a vision and ideas. And as a board member, I know what it means to collaborate and build bridges. As a school founder, I've built two education programs from the ground up. So I know how to plan, implement, and evaluate initiatives. And so the reason I'm running is because I love this community. I have, as an empty nester, I have time to serve in this capacity. And I want to bring a balanced voice to the conversation about the future of Fort Collins. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin?
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and to everyone that's watching. I appreciate your attention and your attendance tonight. So my name is Erin Hottenstein and I am a proud resident of District Four for years. I am a small business owner. And before that, I was a reporter and I covered three different city councils, two different county commissions, and the state legislature. So I know how to ask tough questions and dig down deep in issues and understand complex situations. I'm also a volunteer. I founded Colorado 50/50, a statewide organization that inspires women of all races, classes, ages, and abilities to run for office. And I've also been a board president, where I did a lot of policy work and constituent outreach. I remember one meeting in particular, it was a tough meeting. We had 150 people coming and it was, uh, you know, people were worried that their voices wouldn't be heard. But as the presiding officer, I set the tone and I wanted to make sure that everyone felt respected. There was a lot of back and forth and eventually the measure passed. But in the end, the big thing was that everyone still felt like they belonged. And that's what kind of leader I am. I bring people together and we collaborate and we solve problems. I look forward to the questions.
Thank you. Jessica?
Thank you, Jody, uh, the League of Women Voters, FCTV, um, for hosting this tonight. And thank you to the residents of Fort Collins for watching, whether you're watching right now live or maybe even years from now, since it'll be posted on YouTube. My name's Jess Deardahl. My pronouns are she/her/hers, and I am honored to be joining you all this evening. I've been involved with community engagement ever since I was a teenager. It's ultimately what brought me to Colorado State University in 2002 to pursue degrees in political science and Spanish, later intern at the state Capitol, and now in my current role as the advisor of the student government at CSU. So every single day, I work with students, uh, faculty, staff, members of all different perspectives, identities, backgrounds, to accomplish goals for the, not only the campus community, but the Fort Collins community. So students will come with me with an idea and I help connect them to the right people, resources, opportunities. come with me with an idea, and I help connect them to the right people, resources, opportunities, to get their ideas put in motion. As I've been walking the neighborhoods of District Four the last, I think, six or so, seven weeks, it's been great to interact with them from a safe and social distance and hear about their experiences, whether it's been some people literally moved here a couple of weeks ago, some have moved, or lived here their entire life, and a lot of them have the same concerns that I would love to bring forth to council and share in the future.
Thank you. Kelly? Unmute yourself.
Be good. I'm Kelly Olson. I'm running for City Council in these frustrating, challenging, and complicated times because I think I bring the experience, the proven leadership, and a history of positive results that are needed more than ever at this time, and I think that would best serve the people of District Five. I've lived in the district for quite some time, and I know the people, I know the businesses, I know the neighborhoods, I understand what makes them tick, I understand what's on their minds. I also had the great privilege of representing them between 2005 and 2013 as their City Council member, and I also served three terms as Mayor pro temp during that time. I'm also honored to be endorsed by Ross Kniff, the current City Council member of this district, in my efforts to become the next representative. I also have run eight open space and natural areas campaigns that have protected over 75,000 acres in and around the city of Fort Collins and Larimer County, and I'm quite proud of that. If elected by the good people of District Five, I will bring hard work, integrity, fairness, and compassion to the job. So I look forward to having the opportunity to serve you once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and FCT and FCTV and everyone else who's put this on for us. This is a great opportunity to reach out to the voters. My name's Jeff Hanson. I am running for City Council in District Five. I am an architect by profession. I've been doing that for over 22 years. That brings a unique set of thinking and problem-solving and planning skills that I think are essential for being successful as a member of the Fort Collins City Council. I am a husband, and I'm a father to four children, ranging in age from 21 years to 21 months. But my children have roots in Fort Collins that are 100 years old, or maybe a little bit more, I'm not quite sure. And I want to make sure that Fort Collins stays a great place to live for another 100 years for their grandchildren and great-grandchildren. I'm an adventurous outdoorsman, have a huge love for the natural spaces that Fort Collins has, and probably most importantly, I've been a dedicated community volunteer. I've had seven years of experience on a planning and zoning board. That's given me a seat to listen and hear the voices of Fort Collins, and I want to help them.
Thank you. All right, your first question is, "The availability and affordability of quality housing for all of its residents is critical to a healthy and functioning community. What is your vision for tackling this?" And we'll start this one with Melanie.
Thank you. You know, housing is obviously one of the biggest issues here in Fort Collins, and we are going to continue to grow into the growth management area. I think my priority as a councilperson is to help make sure that any development or redevelopment is working for us and meeting specific goals that we've identified. We have certain, certain pockets of housing that we're deficient in for our affordable housing population and also our middle-income folks. And so, I don't think we need more houses. I think we need strategic kinds of developments, mixed-use developments that both meet those needs and also our climate action plan, and just, just making sure that we're very thoughtful, purposeful, tactical in getting those needs met, and also making that balance where we continue to hold on to our open and natural spaces that make Fort Collins really, really a charming place to live.
Thank you. Shirley?
Hi, yes, thank you. I think, first of all, the city's responsibility is to make sure they are not making it harder to obtain affordable housing. I think they need to partner, continue to partner with charitable organizations like Habitat for Humanity to help with housing needs. I think they need to revisit the U+2 ordinance. I think they need to look at their zoning laws and land use code to make sure that it is kept up with the changing needs of our community. I think an important thing they can do is work toward a healthy business community, who will have the incentives to offer things to their workers, like a housing stipend, or a first-time buyer's savings account, or, and even the bigger employees, you know, like CSU has floated the plan of building houses for their employees. So I think the city can just, they can do a lot of things to alleviate the housing crisis in Fort Collins.
Thank you. Erin?
Yes, affordable housing is one of my top priorities, and I know it is a priority for many people in the city because I have been hearing about it over and over and over. I mean, we want to make this a place where people of all income levels can live, and we want to make this a place, you know, where our children can live and not, you know, have to go buy a house in Windsor, Timneth, or something like that, and drive back to Fort Collins. So, so I think that there are many things that the city can do, and some of them have already been mentioned. I, I agree with the idea of reviewing the land use code and taking another look at U+2, but also in the land use code, we could think about tweaking some other things, like allowing accessory dwelling units, for example, or sometimes those are called mother-in-law cottages. I would like to see more funding going for affordable housing. I think, you know, it's a very many millions of dollars problem, and I'd like to see the budget increased on that, past the about $2 million it is right now. And I'd like to see more money going into the land bank. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Jessica?
Yes, thank you, Jody. I could be wrong, but I think I'm the only potential council member that lives with roommates that is currently in the running, so this is very near and dear to even my heart. What I've heard in the past year through my, the various home-to-health conversations that I've held with residents in the district, and I've held them with CSU students, with neighbors in my community over by Rocky, with immigrants in the community, that is a lot of their top concerns. And I think, for me, too, what needs to be first and foremost of how the city addresses this problem is that it does disproportionately affect people that are low-income and people that identify in the BIPOC community as well. And so, what others have mentioned of how are we looking at the land use code? How are we looking at our housing supply? City Council just adopted the Housing Strategic Plan a couple of weeks ago, so how are we immediately implementing some of those strategies already and looking for the next one to two to 10 years in the future?
Thank you. Kelly?
Thank you. Yeah, the housing plan was just mentioned, the strategic plan that council just adopted, and I think we need to look at the little things, the medium things, the large things, and then the short timeframe, the medium timeframe, and the long timeframe, and start plugging away at it and get to work right away. I also agree that we need to put more money in the land bank because, as they say, they're not making any more land. So we want to make sure we have land in the appropriate places, near employment, near transit, near essential shopping. But we also have to recognize the reality, and that is, to the city's credit, the first thing I talk about in Strategic Housing Plan is no community in the country has solved this problem. It's a high-growth community. In fact, they go further. They said, no, they say no community has solved this issue, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't keep trying. But we have to have realistic expectations, and we have to get focused a little more, whether it's workforce employment or a combination with the lower income that we talked about, and, and plug away the best we can. But we have to have real, realistic expectations.
Thank you. Jeff?
As Kelly mentioned, in the Strategic Housing Plan in its introduction, they mentioned that this is a problem that no community has ever solved yet. I like to play emphasis on that word, "yet." And I, I really enjoy taking on a challenge, and I'm excited to take on this one. It's, it's a very, very complex problem that needs to be looked at from multiple, multiple angles. It's not just a matter of providing any one particular housing type. We also need to make sure that we're promoting the right kind of jobs to ensure we have people across a range of income levels and ethnic backgrounds that can fill in a variety of housing types that we're also promoting to build. There's a lot of regulations that I think is not, maybe not necessary, that we can look at reducing that's being detrimental to the housing costs in Fort Collins.
Thank you. Sidna? Unmute yourself.
Okay. I think that I want to agree most with Kelly because he's right. You know, we've got to be realistic. When you look at what people are being paid, minimum wage is about $7 now. So that means that each month, you'll make a little over $1,000. Well, the rent in Fort Collins is more than that, so reasonable and affordable for whom. I think that we just, you know, it's, it's nice to say we need more affordable housing, and I'm all in favor of encouraging affordable housing complexes that are for rent and not for sale. I'm not, I do not believe in giving tax incentives to private developers for building, you know, three, or four, or five houses that will never be back to, that will remain affordable for maybe one, one person, and they will not be resold at below-market value. So I think we need to be a little bit more realistic about that.
Thank you. Your next question is, "Do you think the city should support and take action to provide access to healthcare for all residents? If no, why? If yes, describe what that support might look like?" And we'll start with Shirley.
Okay. Sorry, can you repeat that again? I want to make sure I got it.
Yes. "Do you think the city should support and take action to provide access to healthcare for all residents? If no, why? And if yes, describe what that support might look like."
Um, you know, I honestly, I'm going to be real honest, I have not looked into this. Out of all the issues that I've looked into, this is one that I have not. And so, my initial reaction is, no, I don't think the city should get into the healthcare business. And I think a couple of reasons why. One is that is going to create a bigger bureaucracy, is going to, you know, we're going to have to fund that. And two, I think that there are other options already out there, you know, through the state that could, and I feel like they would probably do a better job at that than the city would.
Thank you. Erin?
So, healthcare, yes, that is a great topic, and I think that that is an area where the city could look at advocacy and partnerships. So I served on the Health District Advisory Board for the Compass newsletter and learned a lot about the services of the Health District. And we have a great partner right there who is doing a lot of work to help people get enrolled in, you know, with health insurance, and to provide low-income dental services, and to provide mental health services on a sliding scale. So we have a great partner right there. That is just one partnership. Of course, we have other partnerships that we could leverage. And the city can also do advocacy. So even though the city might not be providing healthcare itself, it could advocate at the state level for changes that would benefit its citizens and make our citizens more, and residents healthier.
Thank you. Jessica?
Thank you, Jody. So I had mentioned that I participated in those home-to-health conversations, and while access to housing came up more than access to healthcare, that was definitely a top concern. I have students that during the last couple of years that I've been working with have not gone to the doctor because they said, if I go, then I can't afford rent, and how those two are very intertwined. And I think that to, in order to be a great city, we have to take care of our residents, and to me, healthcare is a basic need that we have to help provide, and it's going to come in a few different forms. So I really appreciated Erin of the different partnerships and advocacy options, and also looking at what are of our current resources and our residents utilizing those. So how we're not only looking at physical health, but mental health as well, and continue to share those opportunities. And it could be, especially with telehealth right now, and how many options that has opened for us during the pandemic, and seeing how we can share those resources.
Thank you. Kelly?
I didn't see that question coming either. The, as I balanced eight budgets in my time on City Council, and I know it's not realistic to think that the city of Fort Collins is going to take on quality, affordable healthcare for all. I do believe it's a goal we should have in this country, and we should be working toward it in a rational way. We can, however, partner with our state and county governments, and the city does have enough money that at times, we can partner with those not-for-profits to make a real difference in the lives of some people, but not all people. But the ultimate solution will come from federal programs that I think they should transition into over time, again, in partnership with the states, and then people have their own private, if, employment, healthcare plans. But I think we need to get a long-term strategy to eventually ensure that all people in the United States have access to quality, affordable healthcare, because the current system is simply not working.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, I don't think the scope of the city budget is something that allows us to take this on on a community level this small, but it is certainly something that's been on my mind in a state and, and a nationwide level for quite a while. And some of us studied in depth, not necessarily for preparation for this, this campaign, but something I've studied. And I've noticed that it's not just a matter of paying coverage for people who don't, who can't pay their own way. It's also a matter of reducing the cost of healthcare overall. And regardless of who's paying it, we need to reduce the cost and health coverage. And I've seen the most effective reduction in costs coming as we let the free market kind of drive initiatives to make that happen. And I think as City Council, we can be advocates on a state and federal level to help move us in that direction.
Thank you. Sidna?
Well, I think that healthcare for all is a little bit beyond the City Council, but what we could do is talk to the Health District and have them hold, you know, quarterly health fairs that will look at everyone who is homeless, because that's the real population that you need to be most concerned about, and get them all, all the homeless signed up for Medicaid through the Obamacare. And once that happens, you can keep in touch with them and connect them with services. But I think everyone else, if they do have, if they don't have a job that gives them healthcare, if they have a low, if they're low-income, they can sign up for Medicaid.
Thank you. Melanie?
Hard when you go last, but I guess what I can say is, I'm a psychologist, so you know, Maslow's hierarchy of needs. If you don't have your physical and your health needs met, and you don't have a safe place to live, you can't move forward with any of the things that help give you a higher quality of life. So I absolutely think that healthcare is imperative, and it needs to be something that's on Fort Collins' mind. I also agree that this is a little outside of the scope of city government. That being said, city governments are about relationships, and Fort Collins has a strong voice with our state and federal legislators, and we need to make sure that we are building those relationships and partnering to let them know what our priorities are, what our needs are, and that we do want them to be making pretty aggressive moves to make sure that we are able to get healthcare to all of our citizens that isn't going to cause them to have to give up on their quality of life or getting other basic needs met.
Thank you. The next question is, "In 2017, the city became a member of the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, whose purpose is to work to achieve racial equity and advance opportunities for all. What is your vision for tackling this?" What is your assessment of this alliance and how do you believe it should impact the work of the council? Focusing on how the target communities perceive the problem and solutions. And Erin, we'll go with you first on this one.
Yeah, I was so excited to find out that the city was involved with that alliance. It looks like that alliance is doing some amazing work and has already laid a lot of groundwork. And I think it's fabulous that, that we've signed on for that. And already we've seen that the city has just is in the process of doing an Equity Indicators project. And we've seen that there are racial disparities in our city when it comes to housing and homelessness and arrest rates and other areas like that. And so I'm so glad that, that we are taking a good look at, you know, what, what our numbers are. And I'm also very excited about the, the new Office of Equity. I think that's so important. And because for me, there is no us and them. If the entire community isn't thriving, then we're not thriving. We've got to take care of everyone.
Thank you. I'm actually going to reverse our order so you guys stop going after the same people. So we're going to go backwards for a couple. So Shirley.
So, you know, I unfortunately grew up in an area where racism was very real and very ugly. And so my kids growing up in Fort Collins, I feel like they grew up without that racist influence. And having said that, I feel like I, I feel like I need to listen and to hear if there is, you know, inequality or if there's not diversity. And I firmly believe in the principle that all have been created equal. And they, we all have intrinsic value because we're human. And so I, on the council, would work to promote that. And I would also work to encourage people from all backgrounds and all diversities to join the conversation by, you know, reaching out to them and seeing what their needs are and giving them, you know, just encouraging, like I said, encouraging them to be a part of the conversation because they really want to listen to that.
Thank you. Melanie.
I have been lucky, I think, to have stepped onto council right as we were really starting to look through an equity lens. And I'm really proud of the city for taking that on because I think we're, we're being honest with ourselves that we have a lot of inequities in this wonderful city. Housing, access, income, job opportunities. I mean, we, we have inequities and we're being honest about it and we're tackling it. And I think that's really, really important. I think it's wonderful that we're starting the Equity and Inclusion Office. And I'm hoping moving forward, that not only do we collect data and have conversations, but we do seize on opportunities to put our historically underrepresented groups in the driver's seat. I was just talking to another council member today about that where it needs to be them making decisions for their communities about what works. And we can make some real great changes. I also love that we're talking about a legal defense fund for some of our most vulnerable Fort Collinsites. And I think we're moving in a great direction, but we still got a lot of work to do, but right mindset.
Thank you. Sidna. Unmute yourself.
Keep doing that. Okay, the biggest inequity, of course, occurs when people go for a mortgage or when they go for, to rent an apartment and they're turned away for no other reason than perhaps they're not, they don't fit into the, what the landlord or the bank loan agent wants, has in mind as a perfect person. So as long as, as long as this is not window dressing. And by that, I mean, as long as they're serious about really getting at the root of the problem, which is making sure that everyone has equal access to loans, to mortgages, to housing. And they have a way that there can be complaints made and have action taken. And not just, you know, complaints and then it goes into the void, but where they, they are, have someone that checks up and checks back with the people. Then if, once you have a system like that in place, I'm hopeful. But right now, just hearing the words, you know, Alliance for Equity, it's a lot of nice sounding words, but that's about it.
Thank you. Jeff.
Yeah, I appreciate the, this collaboration with the alliance and the creation of the Equity and Equality Office for Fort Collins. This is a problem that this country's been working on for 60 or 70 years or possibly more. And the fact that we're still talking about it makes me think that there's been a lot of lip service done and no real action. And I'm, I'm not afraid to start digging into it right from the beginning and figure out how to build a new solution to create a community where everybody feels included. I mentioned in my introduction that my children have roots here, they're 100 years old. They're part of one of those communities. And I've kind of, I've heard some inside voices on what goes on there that's not visible to everyone else. And I truly recognize the need to address this from the root.
Thank you. Kelly.
Thank you. Yeah, I too am very excited about the city joining the organization and also the new Equity and Inclusion Office. I heard some things earlier that out in this group would trouble me a little bit because I think we all have a lot of work to do. Even those of us that think we've led a pretty good life and that try to go about it in a certain way have biases and histories that we don't even realize. We all have a lot to learn. We all have a lot to do to educate ourselves for these unconscious biases that we bring. And I just think there's a lot of good can come from this. I hope nothing but good pretty much can come from it. But I also think we should focus on low-income people too. It's not just about different categories of people, but the low-income people in Fort Collins need to be part, in general, need to be part of that equity inclusion aspect. And this is one of the things, the city can annoy me, the city organization on a lot of levels. In fact, they do it almost continuously. But this is one of the things that I'm very excited to get to work on if I have the privilege of, of serving on the city council.
Thank you. Jessica.
Yes, thank you, Jody. I want to echo what people said, that there's a lot of work to do and not only working forward, but looking at our past. How are we acknowledging that when we're a part of this community of Fort Collins, that this actually was lands of the Rapa Ho Shan and Ute Nations? How are we addressing that first and foremost? I agree with Kelly of the self-work that we have to do. I know a lot, just individually for me, of what are these implicit biases, biases that I hold? How am I showing up in different spaces, whether it's with my students, whether it's working with residents in the district, different community members, and how am I acknowledging that? I, for myself, I decided to pursue degrees, I guess, of political science in Spanish. And so how am I interacting with community members in their native languages? And how am I holding these conversations and addressing some concerns that residents have? And I think that we have laid the foundation and framework, but it has to be more than just an office that is part of the city. It has to be all of us involved and engaged.
Thank you. Our next question. On the ballot referred to the voters by city council is a measure to establish regulations regarding disposable bags and other sources of single-use plastic pollution. What is your position on this ballot measure and why? And we'll start with Kelly on this one.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with all of the details yet because I haven't read my whole guide because I've been too busy campaigning. But I will say that the plastics are a real issue globally that we have to deal with. And we have to attack it aggressively. There's three floating islands of plastic in the oceans, the size of Texas. That's three of them, the size of Texas. So plastics are a real issue. I think this is the beginning. The devil's in the details and the angels in the details. When I make up my own mind for the issue that's on the ballot, I'll consider if they got the details right. But I do like the fact that part of that resolution is that they'll continue working on the issue of plastics overall. I don't know if they got the porridge just right, but we all get to make up our minds individually and the citizens will have the final say in that. So I'm, I'm very open to it. I've got a little work to do.
Thank you. Jeff.
I agree with Kelly that plastic is, is a deep concern for our community and for the global ecology in general. I have read the ballot measure in, in depth. And although it has its headline and it's, the language you see on the ballot seems very promising. As I read deeper, it raises some big concerns for me. I think it gets too much authority to city council to make changes without the voters weighing in on it in the future. I think that the resources that would be dedicated may have a stronger result if they were put towards a public education campaign in the city to reduce the use of plastic bags rather than a mandate and penalties.
Thank you. Sidna.
Okay, I got it unmuted. I am so in favor of this ballot issue, I can't even tell you. It was on the ballot once before, probably about 10 years ago, and it failed. I have been nagging my husband, well, we've been married for 47 years, but I've been nagging him constantly since we've lived here. Whenever he brings one of those stupid disposable bags home from the grocery store, they are a waste. They are terrible. And I am so happy to see this on the ballot and I hope that this time it passes. We, I looked it up, I have it on my website, but we use 100 billion of these plastic bags every year in the world. And that's three, or maybe in the United States, and that is 307 bags per person. Just think about that. So I'm so happy and I'm very much in favor of this.
Thank you. Melanie.
I, if you watch city council, you know exactly how I feel about the plastic bag ban. You know, there are equity issues that we have wrestled with and worked through to find solutions around a plastic bag moratorium. I voted yes, however, I think it is a small step, but a necessary step. Plastic mitigation is incredibly important moving forward with our solid waste issues. And, you know, people will adjust. The reality right now is people are aware that plastic bags are problematic. But the reality is it's easier to get a plastic bag than to bring your own bag that you can use hundreds of times. And so unless we make it a little uncomfortable and easier to bring your own bag, people aren't going to make the shift. We all know plastic bags aren't awesome. So I do think it's a good step. I, I think that down the line, we do need to look at additional single-use plastics. I think municipal composting might make that transition easier because we could look into bioplastics. But I am fully in support of the plastic bag ban and I think that we can do it thoughtfully as a city.
Thank you. Shirley.
Can I just say ditto to what Jeff said? No, I'm just kidding. I really agree with him. I, I'm concerned that it gives the council a lot of power. I'm concerned about the effects on the low-income and the handicapped people. I think that there is a, I understand it right, there is a question of legality in conflict with the state law. And then I think that it forces, one, one person told me, said, you know what, I reuse these plastic bags. Or, you know, like to pick up after my dogs. Am I going to have to go to the store and buy another single-use to pick up after my dog? So I think, I don't like the plastic bags either. I just think that this is very problematic, actually. If you really dig into the research about how much it costs environmentally to, to make these and in regards to the paper bag and then the reusable bags, I think you'd be really surprised at the, the research on that. So yeah, I think we need to keep working toward that and figure it out.
Thank you. Erin.
I support it and I recognize that there are pros and cons to it. And I think no proposal is going to be perfect and meet every, you know, every need. But I think by and large, this is going to solve some problems for us that, that we need to solve. I was sitting in on a panel discussion about this plastic bag ban. And, and they referenced an article that was in the Denver Post a couple of years ago about scientists have found that it rains down microplastics in Rocky Mountain National Park. That is incredible. And that tells me that it's, yes, it's a problem in the oceans and it's a problem here in Colorado and we need to do something about it, even if the proposal is not perfect.
Thank you. Jessica.
Yes, thank you. For me, I feel grateful that we are in, live in a community and that I work at a university that is very focused on the environment and sustainability. Withstanding that, we obviously see people that to go to the grocery store with like 10 bags of, or 10 pounds of plastic bags at them every time. In my kind of anecdotal research, every time I go to the grocery store, I always ask the teller of like, how often do people use reusable bags? And they say a lot of times that more often than not, they do see people bringing it. But I agree with Melanie, it's still not 100% of the time. So we have to do something to change that shift. I used to live in Dublin, Ireland, and you couldn't find a plastic bag really anywhere because they imposed a tax, I think about 15 years ago. And so now it's just common, it's the norm. It's part of everyday culture that you bring your reusable bag to the grocery store. So it's going to see what is that societal shift that changes when we all know plastic bags are bad, but we try to find ways to reuse them, but we really need to think about our environment and the impact every day.
Thank you. We are going to squeeze in one more question before closing. So we'll go over by a couple of minutes. But what efforts can be made to increase public participation in government and elections? With efforts such as ranked choice voting, independent redistricting, public financing, and moving elections to November? And we'll start with Jeff on this one.
Public engagement in all elections is very important. And we see a dramatic drop in participation when it comes to our municipal elections. I can see pros and cons to moving the, the local elections to November. We'd certainly get better turnout, but I think that the excitement over the national elections might detract from the issues that are going to affect us every day. I think the people running for mayor or city council have a lot bigger impact on the people in the city than the people in Washington DC. So I guess at this point, I don't lean one way or the other, but I would like to have a conversation about that. I do like the idea of ranked choice voting. I think it could save costs in the future, especially when you have races like you're looking at in District Four right now. Public financing, no, I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Sidna.
Well, I am so in favor of ranked choice voting. And as just Jeff just mentioned, this race would be, is just a prime example of how it would help. I am very much in favor of public financing when citizen, for campaigns. When Citizens United was passed, I went down to Denver with a couple of my friends to protest and lobby in the, in the State House. And we had a little march to the Supreme Court, the federal court down in Denver. I, I, I just think that billions of dollars are spent on elections unnecessarily. I would love to see that money invested in mental health services for people in the United States and also to help the homeless. There's no need for all of that, you know, that terrible expense. I hate getting text messages. I hate getting phone calls. Every time I get literature at my door, I drop it in the recycle. And I have received literature from three of you at my door. So anyway, and it's gone in the recycle.
Thank you. Melanie.
Sorry, Sidna, about the literature. It's a necessary evil, but you know, I'm in support of, of all of the things that you mentioned, if I'm remembering them correctly. I, I think we need to take pretty assertive action to make voting easier. We've got to make sure that voting's easy, that it is, that all voices feel like they are heard, that there are choices that people feel like are reflective of their strengths and needs and their values. And, you know, we've, we've got to make some shifts. And right now, the fact that we've got something like 30% of people voting and our young people especially seem disenfranchised from the political system, it's problematic. So I, I think we do need to do a pretty significant overhaul. I can tell you, one of the reasons I'm proud I can tell you, one of the reasons I'm proud to be on city council right now is I can go into Rocky classrooms and talk to them about, hey, I'm a lady who lives in your neighborhood, and I work in your school, and I'm helping make decisions about A, B, and C that impact you on a daily basis. And I think the more accessible legislators can be with young people, the better.
Thank you. Shirley?
So I agree that we need to hear from more people. I'm not a fan of ranked choice voting. Just, I think it makes things more complicated. As far as changing the election to November, I think that could go either way. I'd probably be for it just because it'd be warmer campaigning, I think, during the summer months. But, but I, I mean, I'm open either way to that. I do feel pretty strongly about supporting the public financing. I think that there's too much, sometimes there's too much outside money in our local, what do you call it, our local elections, and I, I would like to see that, that be negated somehow. And I think public financing might do that, so.
Thank you. Erin?
Thank you for bringing up one of my favorite topics. So through my work with Colorado 5050, we've done Get Out the Vote for every election in the last four years, and I have learned a lot about voters and voting. And so, and also, I'm an election judge, and so I've seen voting, you know, not only as a voter, but also, you know, helping the process through and seeing all the security and, and all the pieces. So as for ranked choice voting, I really like it because it's a way for people to feel like they're not wasting their vote. And so I like that one. I like public financing. We've seen that work in some other communities around Colorado with matching funds, and so I think that's a great idea. As for November, moving it to November of an odd year would line it up with the school board elections and increase the number of people voting by about 10 points. It's a very easy change to make, and it would make a lot of sense for our voters here in Fort Collins.
Thank you. Jessica?
Yeah, lots of different ways to get more voters engaged. I think for me, what, in considering the choices that you mentioned, Jody, definitely, even with ASCU elections that are going on right now, the student government that I advise, they have a limit on spending, so we don't have like all, like if they come from a lot of money, they just have a limit of what they can spend. And so public financing and having more localized options, I'm definitely in favor of. As far as timing, what people have mentioned, I could also go either way. I did talk to a voter this, on Sunday, who, when I came to his door, is like, oh, I still have PTSD from the November election. Now we're having another one, you know? And so how we're doing timings, there's, I think, pros and cons to both. For me, it's how are we outreach into people and spaces that they're at? So whether it's in their neighborhoods, I think I'm very in favor of having events when we're going to be able to at places where people are. I used to work at Horse and Dragon Brewery, and we would talk about water issues. We would talk about local issues that were important, and so just finding out where the people are.
Thank you. Kelly?
I was hoping we'd get this question. First, I'll talk about what I did my last term on council. We made it so that voting was free in Fort Collins. We also had it that the districts were made up of voters, not of people. We changed it so now the districts are based on people. We were also purging people too quickly, so that made it harder for them to vote. Now you have to miss more elections in a row to be purged. So I took those three actions, I led on those three actions, the council passed them. Voting reform is very important to me. Fort Collins does a very good job in that way, we mail a ballot to everyone that qualifies, and we made it easier to qualify. As far as ranked choice voting, I'm absolutely for that. I think we should pursue and seriously study the November elections, and of course, public financing of, of campaigns is something long overdue.
Thank you. All right, we are at time right now, so closing comments, 60 seconds each. And Jessica, you have not been able to go first yet. So Jessica, your closing comment?
I've not, and with my last name, I'm new to that. Yeah, I would say as a leadership educator and as an advisor, I always am trying to work with people that have ideas and perspectives that are different than me. So how am I listening to them? How am I really taking in their experiences? Because we can all go through the same things, but because of the identities that we hold, because the way we were raised can come out with different ideas. And so I live that in my everyday life, working at Colorado State University with the different faculty, staff, and students that I interact with. Been doing that during campaigning, as I've reached out to residents. Also, in my travels around the world, I've not only lived abroad, but been able to travel to a lot of different countries and really trying to learn from other people, to see what information I can take in, really digest information. What is the data that we can see, but then what are the stories that people share as well? And for that, that's why I'd love to be your representative on city council.
Thank you, Jessica. Erin?
So we're so happy, my husband and I, to be raising our son and daughter here in Fort Collins. As I mentioned, we've been here for 21 years, and we just love it here. And I wanted to mention that, you know, I have felt the pain as a small business owner of this last year with COVID. And it is super important to me to help individuals, families, and small businesses get back on their feet and to get those jobs back that we lost. Also important to me are affordable housing and climate action, and keeping that diversity, equity, and inclusion lens on everything that the city does. My name is Erin Hottenstein. You can check out my website at erinhottenstein.com, and I would ask for your vote.
Thank you, Erin. Shirley?
So I had a closing statement prepared, but I just, I don't know if you noticed, I've been taking a lot of notes. And so I just want to say to all the other candidates, it's, it's really fun to listen to you because you give me a lot to think about, and so like I have all these notes that I've been writing down. So anyway, just really quickly, you can go to my website to, to learn more about me at voteshirleypeal.com, and you can see my priorities there, so I won't go over those. But I just want to close with that, you know, on Monday, we celebrated International Women's Day, and I'm so gratified to see that there's five of us, five strong women candidates, and I'm very honored to be a part of this class of candidates. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Melanie?
Thanks for bringing that up, Shirley, because I was going to echo. It's, it's great to see so many strong, amazing women running, and, you know, I'm happy to be one of them. I guess, you know, I just really love this job. It was a rigorous process to get placed in the vacancy, the vacant seat. And it meant so much to me, to be able to step into Kristin Stevens' shoes and to be able to be on council for the last couple of months. And so, you know, I would love to continue on. I'm loving this job. I'm making great relationships. I'm getting my feet under me. I've got a lot of folks supporting me, and I think most importantly, you really care about this community. I've got two little kids. I work with high schoolers. My parents live here. My in-laws live, live here. I am fully invested in making sure that Fort Collins is a sustainable, progressive, healthy, wonderful place to live for decades to come, and I hope that folks will, will help me retain my seat in District Four moving forward. Melanie Potyandi, www.melanieforvoco.com. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Melanie. Sidna?
So I'm running against four talented and qualified women for this job. District Four is very lucky, but that doesn't mean that I think you should vote for any one of the others. I think that my background in accounting and my experience, my skill with data analysis will be valuable in the next year when budgeting and setting priorities will be so important. I would love it if you would consider voting for me. And if you'd like to find out more about my positions, I, I urge you to visit my website. It is www sidna4 district4.com. That's two, number four. So it's sidna, number four, district, number four, dot com. And I also have a Facebook page, Sidna for District Four. Please consider voting for me. I'd love to be your city council member.
Thank you, Sidna. Jeff?
Hey, thanks for the opportunity to talk tonight. Everybody here has talked about how great a place Fort Collins is to live in. We've made the number one place to live on several different lists, and it's a very complex web of attributes that makes Fort Collins keep hitting those one, number one spots. The current COVID pandemic that we're dealing with and the current political climate that has passed the national campaign has really started to stress those connections in that web. I think it's important to start to work to reconnect them so we can stay on those number one lists. I've spent seven years on the Planning and Zoning Board, listening to Fort Collins. And listening is probably my best attribute. I will listen to everyone. I want to understand, truly understand the issues that, that they bring to the table and work to find solutions. Vote for Jeff Olson.
Thank you. Kelly?
I'm Kelly Olson, and I've been best placed if I can answer anything in less than a minute. So I had the great privilege of representing District Five between 2005 and 2013, and I'd greatly appreciate the opportunity to do that again. And if you give me that opportunity, I will govern with hard work, integrity, fairness, and compassion, with a little splash of humor in there. You can count on it, and you can count on me. So I hope I get your support. Kelly Olson, for City Council, District Five.
Thank you, Kelly. Well, we are past time, sorry, and thank you. Please visit for this and every election, the league site, vote411.org, for unbiased information on current ballot issues and unedited responses by candidates to more questions that we did not ask this evening. And candidates, if you haven't, fill those out, please do. And also, please visit all of the candidates' websites directly. Thank you to all of you sincerely for spending this hour plus with us and letting the voters get to know you. Thank you to the city of Fort Collins for making it possible to continue to offer this forum during a pandemic on Zoom. And thank you to all of the voters for your interest in the council candidates. And that is it. Thank you all.